Good evening. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for November 19th, 2025. Roll call, please, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
President.
Mrs. Cahill.
Present.
Mr. DeGatto.
Present.
Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
Mrs. Perdios.
Present.
Mayor Koch.
Present.
Quincy High School Student Representative, Mr. Malavia. Thank you, Mr..
We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any memorials?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have one memoriam. We would like to recognize Barbara Allen, a secretary for 30 years in the Quincy Public Schools administrative offices and at North Quincy High School. If you could keep Barbara Allen and her family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
At this time, we have open forum, which is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a non-resident pack.
Wave the reading.
Wave the reading.
Wave the reading. Nobody here.
Okay. Is there anybody here? No. Okay. We wave the reading. At this moment, I'd like to ask for a motion to move out of order, a vote that we're going to be taking for the reopening of the Emilio Delacazza Childhood Center. Can I get a motion? Mrs. Hubley and Mr. Bergoli. So also, can we get a motion to do a roll call vote for the opening of the Delacazza Childhood Center?
I actually have a... I'd like to object to his voting on this item tonight. At the March 26th meeting, Mrs. Lebo referred this to the Teaching and Learning and Facilities Subcommittee Meeting for review and discussion. Since we haven't had any subsequent Subcommittee Meetings discussing this, I don't believe it's proper or allowed for us to vote procedurally since it hasn't been voted out of Subcommittee.
Mr. Malavie, what do we?
You're making a motion to table?
Yes.
Yes, I guess, yeah.
And the item's tabled to the next meeting.
Okay. We'll table to the next meeting for December 10th, I believe. Correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. As I shared with you earlier this fall, school committee member Paul Bergoli has been awarded the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Lifetime Achievement Award. Mr. Bergoli was unable to attend the dinner in person, so Mask Operations and Marketing Director and former school committee member and city councillor Anthony Andronico and Field Services Representative Sean Costello are here tonight to present the award. Before I ask Mr. Andronico and Mr. Costello to take the microphone, I do want to recognize Mr. Bergoli's family who are here, his son Patrick and his son Christopher and his granddaughter Eden. Good to see you all. Thank you, Eden, for joining us tonight. With that, if I could have Mr. Andronico and Mr. Costello.
And she's in red, Paul.
Thank you, Superintendent Malavie, Mayor Koch, Vice Chair Cahill, members of the school committee, and of course Clerk Laura Owens. So it's good to see you all again. To Paul, on behalf of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, we're very proud to honor you with the Lifetime Achievement Award of the organization for 2025. I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention that you were joining your colleague to your right, Emily Lebo, who was bestowed that award last year. Thank you. So just very briefly, I mean, 36 years within education itself, 34 within Quincy. Started out as an elementary school teacher, moved on to become a guidance counselor, and if I have this right, I think you coached every single sport that was offered throughout the years. Just wanted to say thank you for your service to Quincy and beyond. You've made a really great impact, and I'll pass it over to Sean for the official presentation, and then I'm sure we'll get a few photos as well, and if your colleagues would like to say a word.
Great. Well, first of all, congratulations. I've met many of you before. I'm your new field rep. I've been on for just less than a year, but for my prior job, I actually worked as the staff director for Representative Bruce Ayers at the State House, so I'm very familiar with Quincy. And I say that because I'm very familiar with Paul Bergoli. I've seen the impact that you have on students. I've seen the impact that you have on the community, and you and I have gotten to chat many times throughout the year because I know you're friendly with my former boss. And I remember the first conversation we ever had was at Quincy Access TV, and I told you I was from Marshfield, and you immediately told me how many times you had beaten them in various sports over the years.
It was once.
Well, I didn't want to put you on the spot like that and tell you it was only once, but you did. You knew right off the bat, and you were very proud of that. So I remember, I always remember that. That was the first thing out of your mouth, and that, to me, speaks to the pride that you have for the community that you serve and the kids that you've worked with over the years. So we're very proud to award this to you. We only award a few Lifetime Achievement Awards every single year. There's thousands of school committee members in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there's hundreds of superintendents. So the fact that you were one of how many this year, like three or four? Yeah. Like three or four statewide to receive a Lifetime Achievement Award, especially, you know, after last year where Ms. Lebo had received one last year. It's very unusual for there to be two in a row, but it speaks to the quality of school committee members that you have here in Quincy. Again, it speaks to you and your long career of service to your city and to the students. So this is a Lifetime Achievement Award presented to Paul Bergoli in recognition of your years of service to the children and families of Quincy as a school committee member and community advocate for public schools, and it was presented by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees in 2025. Congratulations, Mr. Bergoli.
Usually I'm not at a loss for words, but this little... It means a lot to me, obviously. When I was in fifth grade at Goodly Bryant School, Pat Drew had a tremendous impact on me. From then on, I knew I wanted to be a teacher and a coach. And in Quincy. I've met so many great people in my career, many of whom are in the school committee right now and past members of the school committee, past members of the superintendent's leadership team and current, and obviously the superintendent and prior superintendent, who has both have become good friends of mine. And I'm very happy that someone called my two kids to come here, my two sons, because I was totally surprised, and my beautiful granddaughter Eden, who's the smartest girl in Braintree. And the prettiest. Right, Eden? No, this is really a special award, and the mayor just said to me earlier that it means that, you know, they give it to you a couple of years before you... I hope that's not true. But really, I'm an emotional person anyway, but this is overwhelming for me. I'm very proud to have served the city for 34 years, and I thank the people of the city who had their faith in me to give me an opportunity to do this, and I just appreciate it so much. Thank you. Gentlemen, for taking time out of your night to come here and do this for me, it won't be forgotten. Thank you. And thank you to all of you guys and my colleagues as well.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Congratulations again, Mr. Bergoli. Moving on to staff recognition, another positive piece of information, principal longevity. With the annual review of student achievement underway through the school improvement plan presentations, I want to take this opportunity to recognize our outstanding Quincy Public Schools principals. The longevity of our principals is very unique to districts of our size, and it is consistent with Quincy's position as being number one in the top 30 largest school districts in Massachusetts for educator longevity, which is really amazing, 10% overall throughout the state. The principals' dedication to their school communities, mentoring staff, and building family connections is integral to the success of our students in our district. Of our 19 principals, three have served for more than 10 years. Richter Cristofaro, 11 years. Margaret McNeil, 12 years. Robert Marrera, 13 years. And seven have completed 15 years or more. Nick Ahern, 15 years. Jim Hennessy, 16 years. Dan Gilbert, 17 years. Steve Sylvia, 17 years. Christine Barrett, 18 years. Renee Melvesti, 18 years. Peter Dion, 19 years. Of course, when you see these educators in the next few weeks at their school improvement plan presentations, please join me in congratulating them for their achievements. So congratulations to all of our principals. And you'll also see them, they've been invited to the December 10th recognition as well, so you'll see them there as well. At the October 29th Massachusetts School Building Authority MSBA Board Meeting, all four accelerated repair program projects submitted last March were accepted into the MSBA project pipeline. The projects are partial roof replacements for Atlantic and Broad Meadows Middle Schools and Parker Elementary School. Point Webster Middle School received new windows and doors in addition to a partial roof replacement. The design phase of these projects is expected to begin in March of 2026, with the work being completed in summer 2027. We are thrilled to be awarded these projects with the MSBA, which traditionally reimburses around 65% of the cost for these projects, and of course, we look forward to keeping you updated on next steps. A special thank you to Laura Owens, who works closely with Paul Hines, our commissioner of public buildings, to file all the necessary paperwork, and it is voluminous paperwork, but we were able to get those successful votes. So we're looking forward to the completion of those projects in the years to come. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarships, congratulations to the over 200 graduating seniors in the class of 2026 who have been awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarships for scoring in the top 25% district-wide on the MCAS assessments. The scholarship covers eight semesters of tuition at any University of Massachusetts, State University, or community college campus. Again, congratulations to those amazing students. Fall high school athletic update, congratulations to the QNQ Girls Cross Country Team, who captured the Patriot League Fisher Division Championship this fall. We'll be having a detailed review of fall high school athletics from Director Kevin Mahoney at an upcoming meeting, but I wanted to be sure to recognize the team for their great championship season. So congratulations to the QNQ Girls Cross Country Team. And again, you'll be hearing more about that at the athletic subcommittee. I want to extend my gratitude to all who participated in this past Saturday's City of Quincy School Emergency Response Exercise at North Quincy High School. This was a significant undertaking that took a year to plan, and its success is a direct reflection of the professionalism, dedication, and collaboration of everyone involved. To the Quincy Police Department, Quincy Fire Department, Bruce to EMS, FBI, and Massachusetts State Police, thank you for bringing your expertise, your commitment to public safety, and your willingness to train side by side with our school community. To the Quincy Public Schools Superintendent's Leadership Team, including Dr. Erin Perkins and Director Michael Dracchio, as well as North Quincy High School Principal Dan Gilbert, thank you for your leadership coordination and unwavering focus on student and staff safety. To Mayor Koch and members of the Quincy School Committee, thank you for your continued support and for recognizing the importance of proactive preparation such as this event was. And of course, to our custodial staff, our other general staff that were present at the building, as well as observers and volunteers, your behind-the-scenes work made this exercise possible. We are truly grateful for the time and effort you contributed to the day. Saturday's exercise was a tremendous success. It provided invaluable opportunity for Quincy's first responders and Quincy Public Schools' security administration to train together, strengthen communication, and refine our coordinated response in the event of emergency in one of our schools. This was the first exercise of its kind in our district, and it makes an important step forward. As we move ahead, we plan to conduct similar trainings at other schools throughout Quincy, making improvements based on what we learned on Saturday, and continue to build a safer, more prepared community for all. Thank you again for your dedication, your collaboration, your commitment to the safety of our students, staff, and families. Together, we are making a meaningful difference in the district. So thank you to everyone who participated. I don't know if anyone had any questions on that, but...
Thanks. Yeah, I attended the event, and it was fantastic. The response exercise was professional, so well-planned, and realistic. It had, you know, everyone worked together, the Quincy Police, Quincy Fire, EMS, top-notch, all across the board, as we already knew, but coming into this situation, it was really fantastic to see everyone work together and have our security staff there, be able to, you know, sort of see what that looks like in real time. So I really appreciate the work that went into it. It was definitely a lot of planning, and I'd love to see this take place again at Quincy High and other schools as well. So thank you to all who set that up for us.
Mrs. Lebo.
I just wanted to speak a little bit about the MSBA stuff. I don't believe there's a municipality in the state that has worked harder or gotten more out of that program than we have, and it's because of the cross-town collaboration. It's the school system working with the city, and it's just, it's an amazing thing. I mean, big districts that I know of have not been able to pull this off, so I'm just so proud of the fact that we have that kind of collaboration, and I don't think anybody's done as well as we have.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Upcoming Quincy Public Schools and City of Quincy events, Quincy High School's Drama Club is presenting The Woman of Troy on November 20th and 22nd at 7:30 PM in November 22nd and 23rd at 2 PM in the Lloyd Hill Auditorium at Quincy High School. The entry fee for the play is $10 for adults, $5 for students, and the Drama Club wanted me to remind everyone that it is cash only for those tickets. So please keep that in mind. On Thanksgiving morning, the Quincy and North Quincy High School football teams will meet for the annual competition. Kickoff is at 10 AM at Veterans Memorial Stadium, and I'm happy to report that the marching band will be playing the halftime show this year, and you should take the time to see that performance because it really is amazing, and our staff have done such an amazing job with our marching band. Thank you to them and to the students, of course. The winter holiday season officially begins in Quincy the next day with a weekend of events capped off by the 72nd Annual Christmas Parade on Sunday, November 30th, beginning at noon in Quincy Center and featuring floats and local marching bands, including our own QNQ marching band in Cullagut. On December 3rd, from 5:30 PM to 7 PM, North Quincy High School Photography Students will be hosting the annual holiday art show and sale to benefit Boston's Children Hospital at Quincy High School. In the spirit of the holiday season, Mayor Koch and the Quincy School Community Partnership are once again sponsoring 'Tis the Season Symphony and Song on December 4th at 7 PM in the Quincy High School Auditorium. The concert features the Quincy Symphony Orchestra under the direction of Yehudi Udigawa and performances from Quincy Public Schools students, musicians, and the John Adams Orchestra and the Combined High School Choral Group, as well as our musical staff. And finally, winter concerts are scheduled for all schools, some in December and others in January after the return from winter break. A copy of the schedule will share in your packets and will be posted on the Quincy Public Schools website and social media. With that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, great. And now we're at old business, where we have the superintendent's goals 2025, 2026 for a voice vote. All in favor? Motion to approve? As amended. And Mrs. Hubley.
On the motion?
On the motion.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments because I know we work very well together, but I just want to say publicly, this superintendent, who really was broken in during the COVID tough time, has done an outstanding job leading the school system, and I would say it's the dynamic duo with Dr. Perkins at his side. Remarkable between the two leading our system, and so that's a credit to all the members of the superintendent's leadership team. So I'm proud of where we're at, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, team.
And we just do it?
I've always thought, you need a motion. Oh, we already have it in a second, so all in favor.
Yeah. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
New business. Did you guys want to go, you're going to stay for the whole meeting? I'm giving you an out.
Thanks, Pam.
So new business, we have the English Learner Education Program Improvement Plan with Ms. Ms. Don, Mr. Lau, Mr. Tung, and Mr. Wu. Welcome.
All right. Good evening.
I think they work.
Good evening.
Do they work all right?
Just tap it.
Good evening. Maybe I'll lean down.
You're good. Keep it close.
Step a little. All right. Good evening. All right. It is my pleasure, on behalf of the English Learner Education Team of Teachers, Family Liaisons, and Central Registration Staff, to present our Program Improvement Plan. I'm here with members of the Districtwide Family Liaison Team, who implemented specific goals highlighted in this plan. Sitting on the far left-hand side of me is Ray Lau. Next to Ray is Moshi Don. Sitting on my immediate right-hand side is Ben Wu, and next to Ben is Laura Tung. Also, I'd like to mention the site-based family liaisons, who also helped to improve family engagement at the following schools. Polino Padre at Quincy High School, Emily Carey at both Atlantic Middle School and North Quincy High School. So this dedicated team of family liaisons are greatly appreciated. This presentation will begin with demographics, follow with reflections on last year's goals, then the family liaisons, and I will present goals for this school year. The presentation will conclude with examples of the family liaison's activities. Let's begin with the demographics on page five. In Quincy Public Schools, there are 83 languages identified. Our current family liaison team speaks Cantonese, Mandarin, Portuguese, and Spanish, which are the most commonly spoken languages after English. You will notice Vietnamese is the same percentage as Portuguese and Spanish, so at this time, our Vietnamese-speaking colleague at Central Registration is participating in professional development to support the Vietnamese-speaking families beyond the registration process. On page six, there is a breakdown by grade level of the English Learner Education Program, which embraces 1,701 students, with the largest population at the elementary schools. The English Learner Education Program included four goals last year. On page 28, Goal One is listed, addressing student success plans, which Assistant Superintendent Dr. Erin Perkins addressed at a previous meeting. The overall district percentage making progress is 51%, which is seven percentage points above the state at 44%. Five schools increased their making progress percentage by double-digit percentage points. Twelve of our 18 schools beat the state's percentage making progress. Another important data point comes from the Seal of Biliteracy on page 26. 71% of the 2025 Seal of Biliteracy recipients were current or former English learners, emphasizing that the majority of the recipients are students who have developed proficiency in English while maintaining their heritage language. So a special thanks to the teachers for their continued advocacy, dedication, and efforts, which made this remarkable growth beyond the state possible. On page 29, we have Goal Two listed, addressing the ESL curriculum implementation at both the elementary and middle school level. During this initial year of implementation, the teams focused on understanding and applying the new curriculum with fidelity, a special thanks to these teachers. Then on page 30, Goal Three is listed, addressing the Language Access Plan. The completion of the Language Access Plan represents the culmination of a six-year system-wide effort to strengthen equitable communication and engagement with families who need interpretation and translation services. This plan integrates all supports developed since 2019 into a unified framework that ensures accessibility across the district. I would like to thank all of QPS employees for making this plan a reality, a special thanks to the Districtwide Family Liaisons, who live this plan on a daily basis and worked with me to put our incredible work into the Language Access Plan. Special thanks to Katie Delaney for placing this content into a professional document with the formatting and thoughtful design and visuals. Also, to you, School Committee, for supporting all our efforts. So thank you. On page 31, Goal Four is listed, addressing scheduled interpretation. The total number of requests increased slightly, reflecting the steady use and continued awareness of the process among staff, and this consistently demonstrates that staff are increasingly recognizing the importance of language access in making efforts to ensure all families can participate fully in meetings and school events. This ends the reflections for last year's goals. All right. At this time, the family liaisons and I will share the four goals for this year. On page 32, Goal One is listed, addressing the student success plans, where the proficiency targets increased by 5% in grades one through 12. Also on page 32, you can see more detailed information about the action steps addressing the assessment data review, individualized goal setting, and the family engagement in order to set goals, interventions, and raise awareness. At this point in the school year, these steps have been completed, and at this time, all teams are implementing interventions and collecting documentation. On page 34, Goal Two is listed. By the end of the school year, 100% of the family liaison, central registration staff, and site-based multilingual staff used for interpretation and translation services will complete the self-guided language ambassador training and assessment, ensuring compliance with state requirements. Our goal is to have interpreters to support families at formal meetings and language ambassadors to support families in informal interactions. So your interpreters are specialized to participate in IEP meetings, 504 Plan meetings, disciplinary hearings, and other specialized meetings. Our third-party vendor in Districtwide Family Liaisons are trained for these meetings. Meanwhile, our language ambassadors are the bilingual school employees who can assist families in their preferred language with basic communication about school-related matters like school attendance, field trips, parent pickup. This training provides fundamental information about interpretation, including ethics and standards of practice. Thank you for your continued support of the English Learner Education Program, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Moshi, who will share Goal Number Three.
Good evening. Thank you, Heather. On page 35, Goal Number Three is listed, addressing raising awareness of the Language Access Plan through district communications, accessible resources for families, and opportunities for families to learn about the plan at a minimum of four parent academies across four languages. Also on page 35, you can see more detailed information about the district communication steps needed in order to raise awareness of the Language Access Plan. At this point in the school year, these steps have already been completed. You can also see more detailed information about opportunities for families to become aware of the Language Access Plan. At this point in the school year, the plan has been shared with the families through the community notices newsletter. The family liaisons have also shared information about the plan during the first LPAC meeting and the first parent academy of the year. The family liaisons will continue to share this information during future LPAC and parent academies of this school year. Now continuing down on page 35, you can see more detailed information about the accessible resources for families. We plan to check in with school secretaries to see if they need any support learning how to use the language line, and also check in with families about their experience requesting a... interpreters when calling the schools. In addition, we plan to check in with schools about displaying the printed resources available to families who visit a school's main office, such as the language identification resources listed on page seventeen of the Language Access Plan. Thank you for your time. And now I would like to introduce Ray, who will share about Goal Number Four.
Thank you, Moshi. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to share information about Goal Number Four. On page thirty-six, Goal Number Four is listed, addressing our plan to establish a parent mentorship program in partnership with the English Learner Parent Advisory Council, also known as ALPAC. The purpose of this program is simple but powerful: parents helping parents. By the end of the school year, our goal is to have twenty-five mentor parents, all of whom are current or former English learner parents matched with new EL families who are just beginning their journey in our schools. To briefly walk through the steps, first, we will create a program framework and define clear mentor-mentee criteria. We want everyone to know what the mentoring relationship looks like, expectation, boundaries, and goals. Next, we will recruit mentors through announcements, flyers, and ALPAC outreach. And yes, we all know snacks help, but the real motivation is community. After recruitment, we will match mentors and mentees based on language, grade level, or school. Think of it as matchmaking, but instead of remains, we are building confidence and connections. Once parents are matched, we will hold a mentor orientation covering communication skills, confidentiality, and district resources. Then we will officially launch the program and encourage monthly check-ins. This can be quick chats, phone calls, or even meeting over coffee, whatever helps parents feel supported. Finally, at the end of the school year, we will collect feedback from all participants to measure the impact. If families tell us things like, "Yes, I finally understand Aspen," or "I feel more comfortable navigating the school system," then we know this goal is doing exactly what it's meant to do. Overall, Goal Number Four strengthens our district commitment to equity by turning family experience into leadership and mentorship into empowerment. Thank you for your time again. Now I would like to introduce Bean, who will share more about our activities.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, School Committee. My name is Bean. On page forty-three, a list of district-wide family liaison-going activities is provided. We provide individualized support for families, utilizing communication methods that work best for the families. This approach bridges the gap between the family's current communication method and the district's emailing method. We are trained interpreters, offering interpretation support to ensure families can fully understand and participate in their preferred languages. We help families and the school discuss student progress with clarity during all formal meetings. For families who rely on WeChat and WhatsApp to stay in touch with loved ones and may not be familiar with email, our social media outreach helps keep families well-informed and connected to school resources, such as calendar reminders and school supply lists to prepare for the new school year. We post about Seal of Biliteracy and summer programs. These platforms serve as effective ways to share flyers, newsletters, and other essential information. By updating phone numbers, email addresses, and the language access icons, we enter these Aspen updates to ensure school can communicate with families quickly, accurately, and in their preferred languages. For new families who need language access to maybe and maybe unfamiliar with the district culture, we provide a welcome packet with the school information and Aspen introduction, a calendar, and other helpful resources. We also guide families through a new parent orientation to help them understand school expectations. Our translation support provides families with a clear and equitable access to important student, school information. By translating forms, school flyers, and school calendars, we provide families with access to information about events, programs, and announcements. Thank you very much. My colleague Laura will continue to share information about family liaison activities. Please.
Thank you, Bean. Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura, and I will continue by sharing the family liaison activities on page forty-four. Let's start with the beginning and end of the school year, because those are the moments when family need us the most. At the start of the year, we help families get settled by guiding them through important steps, for example, the transportation application. We also provide interpretation on the first day of school, so families feel welcomed and supported. And of course, we want our new parent orientation, including support for kindergarten orientation, to make sure new families understand their next steps. As the year transitioned into summer, our focus shifted to keeping families engaged over the summer. We help with outreach and support for summer program registration, and we make sure the next school year calendar is translated, so families can plan ahead. Another big part of our work is helping both families and staff feel more knowledgeable and equipped. For families, we offer learning opportunities like parent academies and on-demand office hours. We also support students and families during high school course selection nights, which can be challenging with no language support. For staff, we provide district-wide professional development session and support whenever they need help communicating with multilingual families. And to make sure we are always improving, we gather feedback from both families and staff throughout our language access survey. Their input helps us understand what's working and where we can grow. We also work closely with ALPAC across the school year, such as providing interpretation, coordinating meetings, and coordinate the mentor program. And even when school is out, we are still busy. During the summer, we support programs like CAM-CAN do as well, run the new parent orientation for families newly enrolled in QPS, and handle Aspen data entry, so everything is ready when students return. Our support isn't limited to certain moments. It's consistent. By staying engaged all year, we ensure every QPS family has the access and support needed for their children to succeed. That's all, that's what we wanted to share with you today. Thank you so much for your continued support. We would like to invite you to offer any comments or questions for our team.
Your work is invaluable for our school system, and we're very fortunate to have you. Heather, I know you travel a long way every day to get here, and we appreciate you. Hope to see you again, I guess. Well, she should.
Mr. Guttrow.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I always appreciate the presentation. Phenomenal plan. You know, I'm blown away every time when I hear eighty-three languages, seventeen hundred students, and really the vast scope of what you do as family liaisons. I mean, I went through that checklist, and I couldn't think of anything else that I would add to it. It's really incredibly comprehensive. I had two questions. On past parent academies, what's the participation like? Or does it vary?
So, we've seen from the beginning of, when we started the parent academies, that participation has increased. We usually have around a hundred participants in total.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay. And I love the idea of the mentor program. I thought that was great. Has the recruitment started? And if so, what's the schedule for all of that? And how confident are you that you're going to be? Have plenty of receptive mentors.
We are very confident. So actually, maybe after tonight's presentation, we will start the recruitment process.
Say that again?
So after tonight's meeting, tomorrow, we will start the recruitment process.
Start the process. Excellent. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. And just to second what Mr. Pergoli said, just invaluable work you're doing. It's just such, it must just be such a help for these families coming in to just have someone be able to speak their language that understands and can speak to the culture as well and help them out. I think the mentor is just an expansion of that, to just sort of have someone who's gone through it, who's walked before them, to help them out with that and answer other kinds of questions that they may or may not feel comfortable asking you guys. I think that's fantastic. The number, it was actually surprising to me just how many EL students we have. Seventeen hundred is a lot. And that's, it's great. And just, you know, having four family liaisons here, and plus, I think you mentioned one or two others, that's a small team. Do you guys feel like that, like we need to be thinking about supporting that at all with additional staff? Or is it something that you're managing and making sure we're meeting everyone's needs?
Right. So that's why I kind of, on page six there with the Vietnamese piece, I'd really like to make that transition of having a Vietnamese family liaison. I would welcome that, if that's something we can look forward to.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to know what you need, and that's great. And just the number of minutes, I was also surprised on the number of minutes of interpretation, and that's not what you guys are covering. It's like five, five hundred and fifty hours. We use the outside translation communications, and it's just fantastic that families are using it, they're seeing the value, and the investment that we're making budgetarily to it is supported. I think this shows the data, and I really appreciate that. I just had a couple kind of high-level questions. I know the ALPAC, either this year or last year, was kind of a rebuilding year. Can you just speak to how that's going, if you've had meetings, just sort of what you're seeing on the ALPAC side?
Sure, sure, sure. So at first, we were so proud to have more than like two hundred and five participants for our first meeting. So this year, I have already recruited like two school representatives from Crete Marshall and also from Paul Webster. And then we are still searching for more parents with different language or different background, hopefully to, you know, to have all the, you know, all eighteen, nineteen schools representative, and also, you know, some of the board members. So, but we are working on it. And then we always share the ALPAC information in all our new parent orientation, parent academies. And I'm pretty sure before the next ALPAC meeting, we can have a little bit more people to join us.
Very ambitious. I love that. I love that.
Thank you, thank you.
And just the amount of support services you give our families is fantastic. I mean, high school course selection night is confusing for native English-speaking, you know, families, so I just can't even imagine navigating it without English being your first language. Are you seeing the needs of EL families changing at all? Are you kind of providing different supports? Are you kind of seeing year to year, you're sort of handling the same questions or the same concerns?
I like how the microphones slide this way. I think that's what helped develop for the team, for them to put forward the mentorship, because we're seeing some questions we've never seen before. So now we're wondering, okay, is, do we need more of that one-on-one kind of piece? Because we have the general questions that actually created the original parent academies, and now we're wondering if we need to fine-tune it. So we're hoping through the mentorship, this will address some of that. And then we can add some additional parent academies going forward, if need be.
That's great. And it would be great to collect some of those questions that the mentors are being asked, so that if there's a frequently asked question, some kind of resource that you could provide families that aren't able to ask that question, that may also have that. That's great. And lastly, did we gather any information from parents on the Language Access Plan? Were EL families, did they see this? Did they have any input into this at all?
I was going to say, we had some, we had you, Ray, because you're an EL parent. We had a fellow, a parent of former English learners, look at it too, which was good. And then I had everyone who was involved in interpretation and translation in the system look at it. The EL teachers were the ones that started the original document that was shared with School Committee a few years ago. So it was kind of a building process to this point, which was, I think, great.
Yeah. No, I'd love, I think it's great. I'd just love to see families take on it too. So if you had like a survey form for families to just take a peek at it, and if they do, to just to make it to build on it. I know it's a Desi Grant, and I'm glad you're leading the way on it. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I was going to say, one thing I was going to say to Mrs. Pergos's point, I did jump on the Zoom for your last ALPAC meeting.
Oh, nice.
And that was wonderful to meet the board and how it was translated in so many different languages, and that was really wonderful. And there was like over a hundred people there. It was amazing. It was, yeah, that was really, really wonderful. So thank you for all that you do.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. You know, there's so many, actually, I think Mrs. Hubley might have been one of the people who started the Quincy Moms Facebook page. And ALPAC has a page, right? Has a Facebook page? And is, do you find that, do you get a lot of questions from people who, like you're going to do a mentor program, right? But do you find, do people ask questions there? You know, that might, they have certain questions that they might throw up on the Facebook page looking for someone to answer?
Not yet, but because I think we did not promote it, you know, using social media a lot, but you know, for the mentorship program, we are going to use like Facebook, Instagram. Yeah. At least those two social media to expand the network, to let people know. So I'm pretty sure that there will be questions asking, you know, how to join, or you know, you know, what's the criteria, you know, all this stuff. So I believe that, you know, once we start using more of the social media, and besides Instagram and Facebook, and also we can use our WeChat and WhatsApp to promote our new mentorship program. So I think, you know, we always welcome a lot of questions, and we'll always want to help the parents to answer those questions right away. So I believe that when we're using more, that we'll have a lot more attraction. So parents' question will be coming, coming.
Yeah. I think it's an easy, just an easy way for people to maybe have something, and they can throw it up there, and then they either help each other answer the questions, or if you're monitoring it, you'd find ways to answer them.
Absolutely.
It might be a good option.
Thank you.
Okay. We're great.
Oh, we need a motion to approve. Mrs. Hubley, Mr. Guttrow, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Desi, District Review. Dr. Perkins.
Well, thank you very much for having me here tonight. So I just wanted to give you a little update on something that will be coming down the pike for us in Quincy. So we have been selected, lucky us, to participate in a district review. We've been chosen to participate in this district review because we have not had a comprehensive district review in the last five years. This is different from a tiered focus monitoring review, which, you know, you may remember, some of you have talked about those before. So those typically focus on special education, or civil rights, things like that. So this looks at everything. It's a, it's a pretty massive review, and it is a law, so we do not have an option. It's a Massachusetts general law. And so what will happen is they, the Department of Education will be coming to the district in January, the week of, actually, of January twenty-sixth. We cannot opt out, and we cannot delay it. You know, we can't ask for a delay till the next year. When they do come, there's multiple parts to the review. So they actually hire a consultant from a company called AIR, which is a consulting firm that the Department of Education uses quite frequently. So they will actually be conducting the majority of the work on the review. There is preparation that needs to go into the review, and then there's the onsite week, and then there is the follow-up activities that will occur as a result of the review. So in order to prepare for the So in order to prepare for the review, they do have extensive document requests. And so that's kind of the period that we're in right now. We are preparing the document requests and getting all of those things in order. The information that they require needs to be submitted to them about, just about two weeks before they come onsite. And that includes schedules. They want maps of the school, every single school. They want every single individual teacher's schedule. They want building overall schedules. They want summative evaluations for our educators. There's a laundry list of items that we need to submit prior to them coming into the district. And so that's the preparation period. Once they come, there probably will be about eight people from AIR that will be in Quincy for the week. They will visit every single school. They did a review most, you know, last year in Fall River, and they did 920 observations in different classrooms. So it is very, very extensive. In front of you, I believe you have the handout that shares the class observation tool, which is the protocol they will use when they're onsite. So in addition to the observation, they will also conduct focus groups, interviews, things like that, and with a wide variety of individuals. And so just to speak for a minute about the class observation tool. And I do just wanna thank Gail Cavalo, who's here tonight, the QEA president, who actually sat in a meeting with me with the AIR consultant to review the observation tool, to make sure that our teachers were comfortable. And so the teachers cannot refuse to be observed, so that they do have to participate. They can refuse to participate in a focus group or an interview if they're not comfortable. So they can say no to that. They can opt out of that. And so you can see on the class observation tool, it's by grade level. It's broken down by grade level. So there's a pre-K to three band, and then there's an upper elementary and secondary education domains. And so it's broken down into domains and dimensions. And so for both areas, it looks at emotional support, classroom observation, and instructional support. There's some differences depending on the grade bands. But for instance, the dimensions in emotional support, it looks at positive climate, negative climate, teacher sensitivity, and regard for student perspectives are just some of the examples of the things that they'll be looking for. You can see the different examples in the classroom organization and then also in instructional support. You know, at the, at the upper elementary and the secondary level, in, they're looking for an instructional support. More examples of things like instructional dialogue and things like that, instructional learning formats. And so when the observer comes, they'll rate each dimension on a scale of one to seven. They'll be in the classes for approximately 20 minutes. If a teacher is, you know, at, out for the day, they will not observe that classroom. They'll just move on to the next classroom. The information that they collect will be aggregated over all of the different classrooms. So you won't, we won't necessarily know, they won't release information regarding individual classrooms or individual teachers. It will be aggregated. And we do have the Fall River Report, which we can certainly share with you. It's public information. It's posted on the Department of Education website if anyone wants to take a look at it. And so that's, that will be the observation. They will also schedule focus groups and interviews, as I mentioned. They will interview students at the high school level, staff, parents, administrators, teachers, the QEA president, ourself as the leadership team. So they, they'll be doing a wide range of interviews and focus groups. They are, what they assess us on is, you have this other handout in front of you, is the district standards and indicators. So you can see that it's broken down into a couple of different standards. They'll be looking for leadership, examples of leadership and governance. They'll be looking for examples for curriculum and instruction, assessment, financial asset and management, student support, and human resources, and professional development. And you can see under each of the standard is individual indicators. Those indicators have massive components to them. So, you know, which is why this is quite an extensive project for us. So after they come, so they'll, they start with a document collection. They come, they do all of the work that I just told you about. They'll be here for a week and moving all around the district. And then after they come, just about two weeks later, they will call us with a debrief and kind of let us know what are the trends that they saw. You know, what are the, give us some idea of some of the recommendations that may be coming down the pike. And then three to six months later, they will provide us with a report. And we'll have an opportunity, you know, the superintendent and the leadership team will have an opportunity to review the report, make any factual corrections if anything is just incorrect. We'll have an opportunity to respond and correct any incorrect information. And then shortly thereafter, the report will be public. And so at that point, then, we would obviously present the results to the school committee. The results get posted on the Department of Education website. And also, obviously, we'll have it on our website as well. There are questionnaires that, that people also need to complete. Some of that's due ahead of time. Some of that is due, you know, when they come. But I believe I brought the, maybe I didn't bring the Fall River Report, just so you can get an idea of the extensiveness of the report. It's quite extensive. So they, after they do the review, it's really incumbent upon the district as to how they use the information. So, you know, they obviously recommend that districts use the information to identify, you know, areas in need of improvement in the future, or areas maybe that we wanna look at in terms of like budget. You know, when, if there's things that, you know, curriculum materials that need to be purchased. I don't expect that that will be the case, because we actually have brand-new curriculum materials in many areas. And they are all high-quality, which is what they look for. But just as an example, you know, that you, the committee may wanna take some of that into consideration as we plan for the budget moving forward. And so I know that's a very quick snapshot of what we will be experiencing when they come to do the district review. But that is basically it in a nutshell, and I'm happy, there's a lot to it, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So I understand, we have no choice. We have to have them come. Will we be getting any of their credentials, background, will they have background checks, that kind of thing done so that we have that information if they're gonna be in our schools?
Good question. We are currently in dialogue with them regarding that. So because they are quarried through AIR and the Department of Education, they feel that they are under the umbrella of the Department of Education and therefore do not need to participate in a quarry and a fingerprint through us. So we're having some spirited dialogue around that. And, you know, we have consulted with our attorneys as well. And Sarah is, you know, is great and obviously is going to be helping us with that. So a compromise that we did have is that they did recently send us their quarries, because the other pieces, when they are in the building, they take the map and they go. And so they're not necessarily escorted by anyone. And so we obviously have significant concerns around that. And so we are in dialogue around the, whether or not the quarries that they sent us are acceptable. We're, we'll take, we're gonna take a look at those, and we'll make that determination. And then working with them to talk about the idea of the fingerprinting of the people that come, because we don't know these people.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. So wow, yes, fun. Just because you didn't have much else on your plate. So I'm so, so glad you need to spend so much time getting all this together. But it, so there was no sort of reason that we were selected. It's just sort of random. It doesn't come from any local data or any other data.
Yep, it's random. It's if you, they look at people who are not having, so we're not having, we don't have a special education audit this year. We don't have, we don't, we don't have NEASK this year. So they look at those things to make sure you're not doing like one of those other things. And then it's randomly selected. They do, I don't know, about 10 districts a year, and we just got lucky.
Yes, yes. It feels like we just finished NEASK like 13 seconds ago, but yes. I'm not worried. The, aside from the piece of how much work this is for you guys, which I'm sorry for and I feel bad about. But the, I'm not worried about what, what they're gonna find. You know, I mean, it's, it's difficult when outsiders sort of come in and they, and everyone gets really anxious and nervous. But we have top-notch schools, top-notch principals, top-notch educators. I'm not, for a second, I don't worry about anyone going into any classroom at any time and seeing what's going on. I don't, everything's, as far as I'm concerned, top-notch. So I don't, I don't have any worry for that. I do, you know, I know that there's gonna be some anxiety, I'm sure, around the educators. But so I'm glad to hear Ms. Cavalo is on the call with you to sort of manage that. So I would try to assure them that, you know, we have the utmost confidence in them and to not be too worried about it. Does, does anyone from Desi or the Department of Ed come back to check that any of their recommendations from the report have been implemented? Nothing?
No, it's really, it's really up to the district how you use it, you know, and how extensively you use it. But no, they, it's not, it's like, it's not like a special education audit where, or a tiered focus monitoring is what they call it now. That they do, that you have periodic check-ins. So they, they have a finding, and then you have to develop a corrective action plan, and then you have periodic check-ins over time. This, they give you recommendations as to areas in terms of what, where they think the district needs to improve. And then it's really up to us whether, whether we wanna implement it or not. I mean, obviously, we could, you know, use it to develop district goals in the future. I think that would probably be recommended and, and something that we probably wanna look at. But, but it's really, it's, it's on the district to, whatever the recommendations are, to work on those.
That's great. I'm glad it's not punitive or any kind of, anything like that.
No, it's supposed to be helpful.
Yeah, that's good. So maybe something good will come out of it. And thank you for having that spirited dialogue around the safety of the kids.
Yes.
Because I shared super concerned about that. So thank you. Appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you.
To reduce their anxiety, are the teachers surprised of what they're gonna be evaluated for when the people come into their room?
So that's why I asked Gail to be a part of the call, so that, so that we can make sure that we're communicating that, what exactly they're gonna look at. I mean, I do, I do agree with Ms. Pertios's comments. I don't have any worries about our teachers or our schools or our educators. I do recognize, and we've talked a lot extensively about this, how anxiety-provoking it can be. You know, having been a teacher, to have someone that you don't know come in, and it's a district review, and coming in to observe you, to rate the district, that's a lot of pressure. You know, but I honestly, I think our teachers are absolutely phenomenal. I don't worry about any of them. I think they're going to kill it when they come. I think they're, they're gonna be impressed, really. But we, we've, I've been in, in the superintendent, we've been in communication with the principals. We've updated the principals with everything that we know. They all know when they're coming. I know Gail has also talked to her rep council and let them know. So, I mean, any support that we can give them, you know, we will. But we, we do have the sheet that, that you, that, you know, that we handed out that says exactly what they're looking for. So, you know, it just, I think our message to staff is just, just do what you do every day, and you are gonna be, don't change a thing. You should just act like it's a normal day and pretend they're not even there, because we know you're doing great things. I have no doubt about it. You know, my children go to the school system, and I'm proud of it, and I wouldn't have them any other place. And so I think we just keep on doing what we're doing, and I'm sure we're gonna do phenomenally.
Okay, thank you for that.
Is there any kind of communication that will be going out to students, just again, for having strangers, people they don't know in the building? And I know how, how anxiety-producing that can be also. So is, will there be some communication about that?
Yeah, that's a great question. And we will be notifying the families and the community that this will be happening in January. This is the beginning of it.
Right.
But then we will also send out a communication, and we'll also be reaching out to families to potentially participate in some focus groups and some interviews, as well as students. Again, people don't have to do it. They can absolutely say no. But we'll be, we will be reaching out in terms of those communications, so that will also be included in our communication.
Okay. And families are asked about the student participation in the focus groups, not students directly?
Right. There's an informed consent, so they will not do anything without the informed consent of the parent.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have QPS nurse appointment, Superintendent Mulby. Oh, sorry, Mass Conference Resolution. There you go. Skip right over you.
So we attended the Mass Association of School Committees Delegate Assembly. There were two resolutions. The first one was the one of removing BMI testing from schools, which our committee voted for me to add an amendment to, which the amendment was passed. What our Director of Nursing recommended us add in was the, be it further resolved that MASC urges the express banning of BMI screening in all public schools except when a student's healthcare provider requests the screening with parent guardian approval. And that was added, was approved, the amendment, and the amendment did pass. The other amendment was just the collection of amendments that were, the collection of resolutions that were already being worked on. And that was passed to have them continue working on, on those resolutions. And that was the end of it. End of my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Before you is a nurse applicant that requires a vote of the school committee for approval. She is obviously certified as a DZ certified school nurse. Her resume is there before you. We're requesting a, a motion to approve a second and roll call vote. Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Moving all of the school, the school improvement plan facilities needs from all of our school improvement plans directly into the Facilities Transportation Security Subcommittee, as we normally do. This is just moving them there.
Thank you. Okay, next we have. One, two, three, four memorandums of agreement. The first one is a memorandum of agreement between the Quincy School Committee and the Quincy Education Association Units A and C for sick bank, roll call vote is their motion. Mr. Bergoli, second. Mrs. Pertios, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Liebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Next, we have a memorandum of agreement between the Quincy School Committee and the Quincy Education Association Units A and C for salary scale placement for Chapter 74 educators. Motion, Mr. Guttrow?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hubley. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Liebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, we have a memorandum of agreement between the Quincy School Committee and Quincy Education Association Units A and C for educator evaluation rubrics for licensed educators.
Motion to approve?
Mrs. Hubley, second by Mrs. Pertios. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, we have a memorandum of agreement between the Quincy School Committee and the Quincy Education Association Units A and C for educator evaluation rubrics for department heads and team administrators. Motion, Mr. Bergoli, second by Mrs. Hubley. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have a consent agenda. Next, we have a consent agenda, which requires a roll call vote. Is there a motion? Mrs. Hubley, second. Mr. Begoli, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdiós?
Yes.
And Maia Coke?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, we have additional business, which there is none. Communications, all meetings in the Coddington Building, school committee room. Upcoming school committee meetings at 6:30 PM, December 10th, January 7th, January 21st, and February 11th. Upcoming subcommittee meetings, November 24th, December 1st and 3rd, teaching and learning. December 8th, teaching and learning, special ed and EDI, all starting at 6 PM. Reports of subcommittee, Maia Coke to report on the October 22nd, 2025 Quarterly Budget and Finance Committee.
Yeah, we had a quarterly meeting. A few questions from Mr. Mulvey, but everything is in order. So, people can see it on the website if they want to look at the minutes.
Okay. All set. Executive session, we are, none. Okay. And motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, just happy Thanksgiving to everybody here, to the public in general. Hopefully, you see at the stadium and at the Christmas festival next week. But happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.